Cool, welcome, welcome, welcome everybody to Town Hall Meeting number 52. It's June 13th today, 2023. And we are joined by Felix, Kran, Judith, Rojo, Slade, Sly, Sugar and Spice, Tavvo and Tommy. Thank you all very much for joining. And we have a pretty basic agenda today. We start off with the workgroups update and then the second half of the meeting is reserved for a discussion on the budget for Q3. And then after if there's time left, we can have a couple of open topics. So without further ado, let's dive right in. But not after a quick reminder on what the ambassador program is about. Basically, anybody can join in. Anybody who wants to learn more about the Singularity Net ecosystem and contribute to its goal of creating decentralized AGI. We do this by having a whole bunch of self-organizing workgroups where you get to hang with like-minded people and create cool stuff. And if this is your first time watching or joining in the call, you can find more information on the Discord server. That brings us to the workgroups, starting with the Process Guild. Just a quick reminder, we are trying to keep the updates relatively short, just to make sure that it doesn't take the whole meeting slot. So yeah, try to keep that in mind. Tavvo, can I ask you for an update on the Process Guild?
Actually, I don't even remember what was the last weekend's topic, but I know that today we will look at Project Catalyst and combine it with some hypotheses on decision-making model, which we have been using. But this time we actually also test our hypothesis. And everything is in the concept of updating proposals for the catalyst. So it's going to be like an all-around experiment today.
Good stuff. Looking forward to that. Yeah, that takes place right after the current Town Hall. Then next will be tomorrow is the... That's actually not tomorrow. It's a bi-weekly call. The archival workgroup has a bi-weekly meeting on Wednesdays, 13 UTC, but it's not this week, but the other week. Quickly going through the meeting summaries channel on Discord for a reminder on what we discussed last week. And that's a long scroll. Too long of a scroll. Yeah, let's keep it now to keep momentum going a little bit. And the next one on the list, actually for the same slot on the Wednesday at 13 UTC, would be the DWork, the Albrecht Group. Tavvo, once again, then I ask you for a follow-up.
The DWork people also will be bi-weekly, so this week it will be DWork, next week it will be archival workgroup, and so that's the kind of idea. And in this upcoming workgroup, we will be looking quickly over the toolset of onboarding website. And the focus will be on onboarding us to use DWork. So because it's a workgroup, it will be more like a high-level overview. This this week, we will look at like, how do we want to stage it? And what are like our expectations to get some markdown files done? Some of these are the things we will need to feed into the website. And yeah, so basically today we will look at the concept and how we are going to work. And hopefully also able to distribute some modules between each other, what we could work between the week. And yeah, the good point of that would be then to create educational material. And for now, it will be DWork. Once it's done, then those who joined and practiced it, they will find different ways to, oh, this is, this is how easy it is to create onboarding content. And perhaps we could replicate that, this toolset to other workgroups and groups.
Thank you very much. Well, next one on the list. As people in chat are noting, this whole slide is asked Tavvo for updates, kind of. Would be the Process Modeling Workshop.
Yeah, and process modeling is going very great. We had like a small pivot when we changed the ambassador onboarding into writers' workgroup onboarding. And that has been going actually very well, from my point of view. And didn't have to put all the work in and community trained up and took parts of the processes. And now this tomorrow, we will be reviewing the processes that has been gone up refined. And then we will move on to the next one. So join us if you want to see the output, what we were able to do.
Thank you. For some reason, my Zoom doesn't alt up anymore. Great stuff. I think the next one, from the top of my head, would be the Incubation and Strategy Combined Session. Was it 19 UTC on Wednesdays? Just a quick check, is my screen still sharing?
Yeah, I see your screen, Peter. Yeah, I, there's a note from Kran, "I did not really take notes for incubation last week. I did take them for strategy." But from what I recall, and please, if anybody was there, correct me, incubation was a lead-in to the budget of strategy and some of the upcoming changes that have been proposed. I can speak more strongly on a strategy guild meeting, which introduced the reason and the need for a rework of the ambassador program, the budget, the roles, and our strategy. And today we're going to expand that. We have till the end of quarter two, end of June, to start quarter three afresh. So we introduced a budget and it's different than what is existing. We are pairing back on stipends for ambassadors. We'd like to open it up. My personal goal is 100 new ambassadors to hit the second birthday of the ambassador program next May. But we'll discuss more about that in Town Hall in a few minutes. And what I recall of incubation, it was a lead-in until the budget and changes and workgroups and proposals and things like that. We usually work hand in hand. So that's all I have to say about that.
Thank you. And I do think you're right. I think we started out with the discussion on the roles and then that morphed into the accompanying budget. Um, yeah, a little back to the archival workgroup. Vanessa?
Yeah, we had our meeting on last Wednesday on the 7th, and it was lovely and brilliant, but quite poorly attended. So we're kind of, we've decided to take a little bit of a drive to encourage people to come along because they are proving quite interesting. And those who are there will probably say that, I hope. As usual, we split it into two. And the first half is kind of going through our GitHub problems board and looking at the work that we're doing. And the second half is practical and actually having a go at archiving. And that means that you can practice your skills on GitHub or learn how to use Gitbook. And those are, you know, quite useful things. And, you know, we're all quite patient and will, you know, let you make mistakes and all that. So it would be great to see a few more people there on the next meeting. It's fortnightly, so the next one is the 21st. And if anybody's got any ideas for how we can trumpet it a little bit and get people involved, that would be lovely. You know, we are thinking about how, and this maybe ties into what Tommy was saying about budgets. It would be really nice to be able to incentivize people who come and do some archiving in some way. And we're looking at how we can maybe try and do that. But it would be great to have a bit of a team because there's a lot of work to do. There's a lot to archive. And yeah, it'd just be nice to see people there. Thank you.
Thank you. And fully agreed. I think on a personal note, the importance for archiving is becoming more and more important with all these potential LLMs to feed information into. That's my personal angle, why I really like it. Yeah, thanks. And that brings us to the Treasury Guild, which takes place at 15:30 on Thursdays. And that does bring us back to Tavvo, I think, if you wouldn't mind.
Yeah, Triffy also last week spent time on the monthly ambassador wards, kind of looking what the strategy has been working on and also putting their insight into this. It also coupled with the idea of like role changes needed and a bit of like, yeah, changes to how the wards will be distributed, like allowing double-dipping opportunities from July. And we also slightly peeked into opportunity to have some tokenomic voting and through Mirabard and Excel uses. And that was mainly, I think. And upcoming Treasury Guild, we also will be continuing the distribution question. Because that's, that seems to be a thing we need to kind of get down and align.
Yeah, very true. Yeah, it's something that pops up in a lot of meetings, from process and incubation to strategy and treasury. Yeah, how to put it? I think we're getting there. Processes are yeah, getting more and more solid. That's definitely an ongoing topic. Alright, then next would be the Video Workgroup. Let's see, Rojo?
Yes. So last week for the Video Workgroup, we had an extensive chat about the use of Summon platform for governance. We reviewed some of the votes we had there already. So we have like, so far we had four to five votes. We also talked about using Clarity, so a Crystal platform on Clarity as an alternative, because we had a lot of complaints about the, let's say, the UI-friendliness of Summon. So we talked a lot about that. And we're currently testing Crystal. We're having a vote today set up. Besides that, we talked a little bit also about the videos to be made. We had a draft made by Sukrin that is proposed to become a video and we're going to collaborate on that. And yeah, that's about it.
Thank you very much. Looking at the weekly calendar, actually, not to put you on the spot, Sugar and Spice, but there is an onboarding workgroup meeting as well on Thursday at 13 UTC. And that didn't make it to the slide, I now realize. Would you mind perhaps sharing a bit on that?
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me?
All good.
Okay, so the last meeting on onboarding workgroup, we discussed emails to be sent to the applicants to the ambassador program. They choose two emails, one to be sent while the other one was to be sent afterward, made the video, the welcome video. I've been able to draft out a script for it and I've given to Roger too for any of the Video Workgroup members to make a video on it. And still yet to get back on that. So on Thursday, 13 UTC, we have another onboarding workgroup. The workgroup meeting will be held in bi-weekly for now, every three weeks. And before then, we'll have an agenda for setting the workgroup to.
Thank you very much. Hmm, that brings us to the Writers' Workgroup. Ah, I see Konichi is here. Well, Konichi, can you share a little bit about the progress there?
Yeah, so hey, guys. So we didn't have a meeting last week. I mentioned that two weeks ago. I had a really busy week. But I had the opportunity to reach out to anyone with an ongoing task, to help them like finish up the task. And yeah, I met with a few of the scripters, yeah, and we managed to finish up your task. We posted an article on Saturday. That was for the CIP 1694 workshop. Also, an article went out yesterday through AGI. I've been following up on them and a couple of updates. We have a few things we're looking forward to. So yeah, there's another piece on them covering the recent Inside Singularity Net edition for me. And with a few words from the CEO. So yeah, that's already. And it's supposed to be going out technically tomorrow to, in support of the article yesterday. Moving forward, I've been, I stepped back a bit to think about a few ideas for the workgroup to focus this month. And I'll be reaching out to the, the meeting this week is now all that we're gonna edit on them, including, that'll be including setting up Zili, so you can use this to even get more engagement and better ways to like give fire our, you know, our community and keep people more interested. And I've been thinking of how the Writers' Workgroup can contribute to that. So yeah, I'll be, there's a D proposal on it, but it's not completed. I will be sharing it with the team on Friday and hopefully we have a lot more to reach out to for next week. So that's all from me. Thank you.
Thank you. It's, it's great to see the blog post starting to roll out more and more consistently. It's, yeah, it's good stuff. And also a reminder for those who haven't yet on Medium, you can click some follows and claps and all that jazz to support the efforts of the Writers' Workgroup. And let's see, that then brings us to the Education Workgroup, which I was not able to attend yesterday. I'm not sure if anybody in the room did.
I think that was taken over by SIP 1694 last week and this week. So there actually wasn't an educational meeting.
Yeah, I can comment on that. So we had, so instead of having educational workgroup meeting, or actually for last week, the meeting about the SIP was an educational workgroup meeting because it was a collaborative effort. So for this week, which is yesterday's meeting basically, we had the workshop. It lasted for a solid three hours, I think. It was very draining, but like really, really deep. And we had so many great conversations in the, in the, in the meeting. I can't tell you much without like getting technical, but yeah, what we discussed was governance on Cardano. We discussed different parameters. We had a lot of suggestions and that's about it to keep it short.
And I imagine this will pop onto YouTube, sharding?
Yes, once it's edited and done, it will be on it.
Cool. And then we get to the last one, being the Governance Workgroup.
Yeah, things are going great, I would say. Lots of focus right now, but it's actually really nice to see two really basic definitions and general governance stuff. So having several tasks often there going into this direction. And that's it, I would say. Let's go to the discussion straight away. We're close on time.
Again, we can. Yeah, definitely. Thanks a lot. Just a quick reminder that there's a public calendar, so you are always up to date with all these meetings. And yeah, then we do get to the budget discussion part of this meeting. Let me actually stop share for a second and pop the link into chat.
Maybe also to start, and what do you think, maybe could give a short overview and context of the whole thing? Yeah, definitely. Budget actively used is actually a really new thing since several months. So that we actually said, okay, we have a variable budget, which is a little bit less than 60,000 AJA per month. Fifty-seven right now, something in this area, I think. And we said, okay, we gift a full permission to Galetz workgroups to the ambassador's program itself, actually to figure out how do you want to use this budget? And since then, a lot of story times, a lot of experimentation happened. Tommy hold the ship a little bit together by knowing that it's quite a messy and wild world. However, coming up with a first draft, to which we sticked last month. Now going into a process where we know the first time have a, let's say, situation where we can look back and said, okay, how did we manage our budget beforehand? What worked? What didn't work? How do we want to do better? Right now, the whole idea of the budget is that we define them quarterly with the main idea to each time, once the cycle is done, we come back, we adjust and improve the budget allocation. And as it sits right now, is that a budget? But yeah, there we can do a screenshot then and have a little look at how it stands right now. However, whatever we speak about budget right now, keep in mind it's really experimental. And we are coming together here to discuss how we can improve and also to look back a little bit on what didn't work well for sure. But yeah, nothing here is set in stone and everyone's insights are actually really important here.
Yeah, definitely. Thanks a lot for that, that intro. And perhaps, Tommy, since you put quite a bit of effort in getting started right here and then building this, maybe you have some initial words to share on it?
I do. So the question is, what is an ambassador program? It's nothing unless it has infrastructure and rules and decentralization in this web three thing. So the Singularity Net Foundation and the Supervisory Council has been very generous in, number one, assigning Peter to us because he's, he's been a godsend for the Singularity Net program. And basically, they gave us a sandbox, they gave us the sand, and they gave us people to play with and said, make your own rules in the sandbox. And we did. And for almost a year, the ambassador program started growing and little infrastructures came up under the stewardship of Peter and TiVo and Felix and Krendano and Fly and Rojo and a few other people who I apologize for not remembering you. But there was, there was a complaint and it was always looking at budgets and this and that, and a lot of time was being spent at it. So essentially, for a little stability, we put in a quarterly system. And the budget screen that was just up was the first budget we came up in. It funded seven of the initial ambassadors. It also funded certain workshops and workgroups and guilds and a little bit left over from miscellaneous, about 10%, 1% for transaction fees for sending out payments or compensation to everybody. And it worked, it worked really well. And then we decided to expand the number of ambassadors by about 42%. And Peter and the SC or whomever was very kind. We didn't have to reduce the monthly compensation to the existing ambassadors. We swallowed it and everybody got paid the same, but we knew it was not sustainable. And there's a lot of moving parts to this ambassador program. And the goal, my personal goal is to see 100 ambassadors by our second birthday. We need to grow the community. We need more people to step up to responsible positions, leadership positions. And this new budget and concept for the ambassador program to be affected July 1st or the third quarter is a radical change. And I wanted to introduce it and I did a couple of weeks ago so we can start ideating, tearing it apart, debating it, discussing it and come to what I like is a consensus agreement. And then probably to satisfy everybody, go to an anonymous vote, up or down. But before we get to that anonymous vote, I'd like to discuss it, debate it and come to somewhat of a consensus. Now, if you look at it, it basically becomes a DWork type of community. Everything will have a compensation rate for a project completion. It's loosely based on $10, $15, $20 an hour, but essentially it's get the project done and this is what you'll get rewarded. If you do it in two minutes, you get the reward. If you do it in two days, you get the reward. So it's, it's not really about an hourly thing. Lurkers, most of us come in in lurkers, and I'm just going over some roles right now. Most of us come in as lurkers. You kind of knock around a little bit, figure out if we're friendly, if you want to stay and be part of us. And then I think you should be able to become an ambassador. There's a few people in this room who are not ambassadors. You should be. And in, you, in my opinion, you got to stay up to date. You go to meetings, you look at DWork, Discord, Telegram. You should get like a minimum compensation just for your time and that's what ambassadors would do. And I'm proposing 400 AGIX. Our budget is in AGIX. It's not in USD. So I'm trying to as much as possible stay with that. And this is irrespective of USD. When I did this budget, AGIX was around 30 cents USD. When we did the original budget, AGIX was around 40 cents USD. Today, I believe AGIX is 20 cents USD. So it's going to go up and down, but it stays as AGIX. Then there would be another role, workgroup or guild lead, and that's an ambassador level. You'd have to be an ambassador. You can't be just a Dworker, not just a Dworker, since all of us will be Dworkers. But you'd need an ambassador level. A lurker could not be, under my, this scenario, this proposal, a lurker could not be a workgroup or a guild lead. And there would be compensation for $30 USD, translated to AGIX, roughly 100, for running the workgroup. And that takes into account ideation, document prep and things like that. And this is all open for debate. Then there would be a new position, a new function of trusted ambassadors. It's a leadership role, similar to what some of the ambassadors have now, or all the ambassadors, the 11, have now. have now. And I termed it the round table because I think, uh, King Arthur was one of the first, uh, uh, democratic equal type of, uh, governance operations. And I'm not, I don't want to get into historical debates or political. But when you're in a round table or, or, or I like using the term, um, mandala, uh, which is a circle around the campfire, you're facing everybody, you see everybody, you're all equal. It's not a vertical ladder where someone's on a rung above you. It's circular. Today I may be the teacher, tomorrow you may be the teacher. Um, so the round table would be, uh, I'm proposing, uh, eleven. Um, so there's an odd number, one of whom is a foundation ambassador. Uh, Peter would be the ideal person. Um, and it would be a leadership role. Uh, it would be there to mentor, to, if there's disputes, handle the disputes. Um, and it would put us more in the position of, in my mind, what an ambassador truly should be, uh, or higher echelon is reaching out. Uh, for instance, we're talking about reaching out to volunteers in Peter's Telegram group. Uh, there's discussions about reaching out to former ambassadors in, um, in, in Sophia Dow, now Sophia verse. Um, possibly, uh, inviting people in from Cohito and Rejuve and Nuna and bring them into, uh, our ambassador program. So we have kind of a holistic, uh, ambassador program. Uh, and then there would be ambassador mentors. Um, and, and that would be people from the round table that would help bring people in, uh, newbies, uh, lurkers and, and get them up to speed, so to speak, help them through the rough spots, be the welcoming, uh, committee. Kind, kind of like what Sucren Spice is doing all on her own right now. Um, and then I put in, because I do believe ambassadors should be outgoing and say Jam Band or Jam Galaxy or is, is that a, uh, N F T con? Well, maybe one of us as an ambassador should go and help. So there should be some basic reimbursement. Uh, the only two legacy, uh, groups or guilds that I carved a budget out for, uh, was Treasury Guilds. Uh, they have certain expenditures and, uh, it's up to about six percent of the budget. Um, and the archival workgroup, uh, which was a new workgroup doing, and, and as Peter said, doing some great things and, and is going to help the L L Ms or the A I come in and, and scrape and understand what we're about. So everybody can figure out what's there. So we set a two, uh, two percent budget for them. Uh, recognizing that, uh, two or three of their members currently are not ambassadors. In my opinion, they should be. And then they would start getting that basic four hundred A G X a month. Uh, so there may be some tweaking that's needed there. Um, and that had left prior to Treasury bumping up um, to six percent. I had originally, uh, identified two percent, but Tevo explained it's a much higher spend every month. Uh, so, uh, we would bring, uh, miscellaneous down to, I think that's thirty-eight point five or something like that. Um, and, and the reason for such a high miss, thirty-seven point five, thanks, um, is Crandano and Fly had, had in their grassroots ideation, um, and incubation, uh, guild, uh, came up with, with a, a very powerful concept that had not been on my radar screen or I don't think anybody's. And it's during the course of a quarter, which this budget is based on, um, someone may come in with a fantastic idea. They, they may have a, a million dollar idea that we can help and they can go to miscellaneous, uh, TiVo and, and the Process Guild has come up with a system for proposing workshops or, or new guilds or workgroups. And, and they're going to need money. Um, so that's in the miscellaneous total, uh, budget of thirty-seven point five percent. Now, this is basically the D fries and myself, incubation came, uh, you know, some of the concepts. Uh, Treasury, TiVo, Felix with the governance workgroup. But, but essentially this was done in, in a, I want to say a vacuum. I didn't really discuss it with anybody for reasons. And, and now it's out there. It's, it's, um, ready and needs to be debated by you, the community, uh, needs your input. Uh, we are on a bit of a deadline. We want this voted on and in place and whatever the final, um, uh, I, I experiment is, we want it by July 1st, in place and ready to go. Um, so we're taking time today and all tomorrow in Strategy Guild. And if, if incubation doesn't come up, uh, if they don't have an agenda, I'll ask to borrow some of their time tomorrow. And we really wanted to debate it, discuss it, uh, ideate on it, come up with, oppose every single concept in here. So we flesh it out. And we all feel good about it when we come to a consensus. So with that, I'd like to open up the floor. I'd like to start, stop talking. Answer any questions, AMA, um, ideation and, and do me a favor when we're ideating. Do not criticize anybody for their idea. Um, accept it. Put it to the side. Uh, we can flesh it out later, but let the ideas come freely in a safe, uh, critique-free, uh, format. Thank you.
Thanks a lot for that overview. Um, well, let's, let's open it up to the floor. Any thoughts?
I definitely agree that the budget should be based on A G I X and it should just be a consistent sum of A G I X because it's the only constant you have. Whereas the price in US dollars is so volatile, you never know how the budget can be allocated. Ideally, Singularity Next coin goes up to, you know, a thousand dollars a coin and we really don't have to worry about the budget in, in such a sense. But for the time being, as to not burn ourselves out and burn out the budget, it, I agree, it does need to be stipulated that this is the sum of A G I X that you get for the work that you're doing.
Uh, thank you. And, uh, I'll put you on the spot. I think it was you. And if it's not, it's, it's okay. But, um, the trade show, uh, assistance was, um, critiqued last week during a discussion saying why, why should any ambassadors get any, uh, travel assistance? And I just want to bring that up because it was a solid critique and it was fair.
Yeah, that, that was me. Um, uh, I just, as far as the budget's concerned, I don't want to blow the budget, spending too much money on things that's more, you know, would be nice rather than what is most crucial and important as to just spare the budget the best we can.
Yeah, looking back at, um, what the past year, I guess, uh, we have taken that approach of, um, I wouldn't say being too conservative, but, um, yeah, generally conservative. I, I think that would be, would be fair. Um, yeah, at the same time, there have been, um, um, suggestions to like, well, let's see what happens if we maximize the spending, um, like go to the monthly, um, maximum and actively spend that and see what we can start generating. Like that will be the other side of the, of the coin there.
Well, Peter, let me ask you a question and I, I don't know if this is public information. Um, I'll say May 31st, we entered this second budget year and I don't know that's the exact date. Uh, we start off with fifty-seven thousand A G X a month. How much of the budget is left over from last year? Uh, that would be a question. And I don't expect you to know that off the top of your head. Um, but what's that?
I can give, uh, give a ballpark estimate.
Okay, that's fair.
Um, close to three, four hundred thousand A G I X. So I think we, we, we spent about half, I think. Yeah, but this is all in the, I mean, transparency, uh, is a thing, but we had a, a switch between first keeping track of, and I'm so glad we're not doing that anymore, to be honest, um, keeping track of rewards on a Excel sheet. And then we moved over to the, uh, treasury system. And if you combine those two, uh, you've got the total, but I, I do not have that top of mind, but it's, uh, yeah. But that's, yeah, in a way it's a separate discussion, like, um, I, I feel like it's related to budget. Uh, but reserve management, um, it kind of feels like a separate topic, but it's, it's a very interesting topic.
Well, well, it is, but I have another reason for asking it. And it was because you said how, you know, if we spend the max, maybe we can make things happen. And I always like putting, um, uh, resting money to work. And I know for instance, that you can, uh, vault A G X with Min Swap and ViFi and earn something like, uh, thirty-nine percent A P Y on it. So I was thinking that if the ambassador program had control, uh, over its own treasury, including, um, last year's backlog, we could then, um, invest that, uh, fairly conservative within the Cardano ecosystem and earn more money on it. But it's not a discussion, uh, for today. I'm going to spark some conversation here and Vanessa, I'm going to, um, put you on the spot if you don't mind. Um, even if you do mind, I'm going to put you on the spot because you oppose, you and Steven, and Steven's not in the room. And I'm getting right into the D worker where we're working on a base rate of ten, twenty and twenty-five dollars an hour. Um, it's, it's a, a, a construct or a matrix. But as I said, with D work, it could take you a minute or it could take you an hour. And it's really, uh, D work is based on getting the gig work, so to speak, accomplished. Not that it's just ten bucks an hour, because I, I know you and Steven have been uh, verbally opposed to a per hour basis, especially for professionals. I'm in, you know, solidarity with you. So I just want to open up this one, uh, row two deed workers, uh, rates of pay. Is this the way that we want to go, uh, for the next quarter for the ambassadors? If, if you could, Vanny, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's more about how we think of it. I mean, I totally take your point that you do it on D work and it's just a notional way of thinking of it as such and such an hour. But I don't think it's helpful to think of it that way. And I think there will be people who will, it won't serve them well. And ultimately also it's piecework, which politically, you know, just, just Google it. Just, just Google labels, labor struggles against piecework. I mean, it, it just doesn't sit right with me. So I think if there's a way that we could actually make that overt, rather than saying, oh, it's a basic rate of such and such an hour, but it's not really. And if you do it fast, you get the same as if you do it slow. That's the kind of thing I'm talking about is that people do work at different speeds at different times. And that should be actually baked in, I think, to what we do. Um, rather than having this thing where we call it an hourly rate, but it kind of isn't. I'd love it if we could say, look, it's task-based and I don't think it's just for professionals. I think it's anybody, really. I mean, I don't know, I don't know what more to say, really.
But on the other end of the spectrum, if you're just giving somebody a salary and expecting them to accomplish something and they just don't feel like doing it. I'm working with a coworker right now who's got sunglasses on and sleeping at the desk. I mean, he's getting paid the same as I am, but I'm working and he's not. So in that regard, it's kind of unfair as well to not do his work.
Maybe he's finished his work. Maybe he's faster than, no, I'm, I'm teasing. But, um, yeah, I don't think that paying by task makes that any different. If you've got a clear definition of when the task is done, which is helpful anyway, even if you're doing it hour, you know, even if you're paying somebody hourly. But if you say, this is the task and this is how we know when it's done, you get paid when it's done. And if, if your coworker hasn't done it, then yeah, that's obviously a problem. But if he, if he or she is having a snooze because they finished, okay?
Different work, different section, same pay, union environment.
Uh, my father was a union man, so he, he, he would be upset with the piecework too. So, um, but I think that's why they changed it to gig work now. Um, if we could keep that budget up, uh, screen share, uh, I'd appreciate it. Um, Cran, uh, before I come over to Cran's comment in, um, in, in the meeting chat, D workers, another controversial, um, section is prior in the previous budget and scenario, each workgroup had a budget. Critiques on that is it forces, uh, people to try to spend their budget before the quarter is up, the year is up, uh, whether they needed it or not. And a, as Peter just said, we spent about fifty percent of our budget, uh, from last year. So we have fifty percent left over. Um, what I did in this new budget is I kind of lump summed every workgroup and guild other than the two that have been carved out and assign them a fifteen percent of the budget. Um, a, as Rojo eloquently put, so much better than I could ever put it, it's on a first come, first served basis. And if your project, whether it's video or writers or, or social media or whatever, if, if they need the budget, they have up to fifteen percent to use. If it's first come to first, first serve. And then there's always the safety valve of, uh, miscellaneous. What does everybody think about that lump sum fifteen percent of budget for all the D workers in the ecosystem?
Um, Ro, you have to answer, but I'm not sure if you were about to answer the.
Yeah, uh, I can answer this. I wanted to talk about something else, but, uh, I can answer this as well. That's fine. Um, I personally, uh, don't think it does, it matter. I mean, you can put five percent in there. It doesn't matter. Uh, because you can always go to miscellaneous. So it's, uh, fifteen percent is a nice number. I think it looks nice. So, yeah.
No, it does actually matter because if it's five percent, next week you all come to Treasury Guild and say, hey, uh, we need allocate five percent from Misk.
No, we don't. No, we, we, we directly go to miscellaneous. Like there is, this is something actually we talked about TiVo multiple times before. Uh, so when we go over budget for a specific section, the miscellaneous by default, uh, the meaning of miscellaneous means like it gets directly, you, you directly take from it when you, when you need it. And you don't have to actually like, uh, take a specific percentage and then allocate it. Like this is just extra work. You don't have to do that. Like you directly take from it.
It's not only that, it's like, I, I feel like there is needs to be a reason when there is a put, a place, a budget, why it's going over. If it's a fifty percent, why do you need more, five percent more? And then you, then everybody will start to reason about their work, which then causes, well, it's a good thing because then we understand what costs we have in ambassador, but it is still overhead.
Uh, that's an interesting comment because you say they have to reason, reason to who? That's the question because.
To everybody. No, no, but. Alternatively, if the lines don't matter, then the percentage here don't matter.
Yeah, in my opinion, it doesn't.
Have a sheet then if, if this, all of these persons are arbitrage and even if you go over, but doesn't affect it.
No, no, don't get me wrong. Like not all of these percentages don't matter. The only percentage in my opinion that doesn't matter is the D workers or the, the, the task one. All the other ones matter because it's a limit. It's a hard limit. You, we should not exceed that. But for the D workers, but for the D workers, that's the only one that will by default go directly to the miscellaneous once it's done. Because the whole program is based on tasks. If we don't have tasks, we, we have nothing. If we don't have tasks, we, we have nothing. We can't do anything.
I think also important here to keep in mind, and when you speak about tasks in our regard, um, I think I pretty agree what you said before, Vanessa. Uh, but for example, I think it's not really a match to compare to, for example, peace economy or whatnot. Because the big difference here is tasks are not only tasks, tasks can be whole projects. Tasks can be whatever, right? And very often participants themselves create their tasks. So when we speak about tasks, it's not in the sense somebody decides you are doing this. When we look on how it actually works in our program, it's very different. And the war task may actually maybe not really fit to what it is. But just not shaping it into this very closed model, because it's, uh, when we look on all the, let's say, accomplished tasks, for example, from our Buzzos program over the last year, it's just so fucking different. It's just interesting that it all fits into this, uh, but yet that you can't describe it in text. That's actually the only common, I would say. Everything besides that can be really, really very different, like.
Yeah, I take your point. I think I'm just advocating not, just stop thinking about it as a rate per hour, that's all.
Yes, and this point really good. And I think this is one of the major adjustments where we could definitely focus on and see, just because we can explain quite some stuff in text, doesn't mean that we are able to capture everything. I think this hourly-based approach, which we try to take, shows, okay, it works for some stuff, but not for all. And just because we have cool tools, doesn't mean that we are actually able to say, actually, okay, which value do we want to attribute, for example, to this kinds of engagements, which are quite difficult to map in a simple text. You would need to write a whole fucking book about it, actually, which we maybe don't want to do, but yes.
Um, I, I would like to actually emphasize on what Felix said and, uh, to, to, uh, I would like us to look at tasks as this abstract term that includes a lot of things, like Felix said, that it's either a specific, well, something you have to do this, or it's a whole project that can be described in terms of tasks and all these things. And the way how I look at this table is all of what we do are tasks. And this table takes some specific tasks and give them a hard limit. But the rest of the tasks are open, as long as we have money or we have funds. This is kind of how I look at it. As most of what we see in the table is a hard limit for a specific thing. For example, ambassadors should not take more than ten percent. That's a hard limit. But the rest of the funds have to go somewhere. And that somewhere is other tasks and other projects that, that are being worked on.
It's actually a really nice perspective to look on the budget allocations more like securities. Like, eh, this are just security measurements, which make sure there's not too much stuff going into one funny direction, let's say, for example.
Yep, exactly, yeah.
Maybe the first line should be colored differently to differentiate that the budget is not fixed.
Uh, yeah, that's a good point, Tivo. Perhaps changing the name would bring like a better perspective on that first one. Because it's the most general one that we have over there, like, it's really the most general one.
I think the last time, last quarter, we had content creation, which basically worked the same thing, but described that perhaps less.
Okay, this is, this is the kind of discussion and debate I'd like to carry over till tomorrow. Uh, it's Tivo's time coming up and I, I certainly don't want to, um, intrude on his time for his, his workshop. So I'd ask respectfully if everybody would, um, think on this. Download it, there is a link, uh, it's, it's in the ambassador's, uh, Google documents, uh, if you don't have the link here. Um, really look at what it will take to become an ambassador. Two months as a D worker or a lurker, and then you can apply. Is that right? Is that fair? Is that good? Is that too stringent? Um, Crandano suggests that, uh, ambassador mentors, um, should, should have a bigger budget. I'm, I'm not disagreeing. Uh, and now looking at, uh, Rojo's suggestion that all, all the other, uh, budget items are, uh, fixed in concrete and cannot go to miscellaneous. I would say that maybe in order to hit a hundred new ambassadors, um, ten, ten percent is going to have to be increased if we can't go to miscellaneous, so. Um, little things like that, but if you could bring it to strategy and Crandano or Fly, I don't know if, um, Crandano is still here. Do you guys have an agenda for, um, incubation? Or can we start in incubation, uh, with how to actually become an ambassador or the budgets and then get back into this full-blown discussion, uh, tomorrow? And then we can give this over to, uh, Tivo.
Yeah, I think, uh, this is a great, uh, great start. And also, uh, we had a little discussion, uh, already about it, but, um, yeah, there's, uh, three more weeks, two and a half more weeks, uh, before we ideally would, would activate, uh, the new budget. Um, so, yeah, it feels, feels the right moment for, uh, opening it up and getting as much input as possible. Um, Victor, I do see your hand raised, uh, but seeing you just joined, uh, I think, uh, we can stick around for a bit after the formally closing, because otherwise we're running into the time slot of the next meeting.
All right, cool. Yeah, it might be, um, towards the end here. I'm just getting in here. This is the SingularityNet Ambassador Zoom.
It is, yes. You found us.
Awesome, man. Uh, you know, I mean, SingularityNet, they're doing a lot of great things, you know, Ben Gertsel, um, AGI blockchain stuff. There, there is an upcoming, um, AGI conference thing, I think, um, on the sixth, is it the sixteenth, June sixteenth?
It is. Um, but if you don't mind, uh, I'm about to, uh, wrap up this current meeting. Uh, we can talk a bit after. Um, that's no problem, but, um, there's another meeting starting, uh, actually five minutes ago. So, yeah, for, uh, for this, uh, session, we do have to wrap up. Um, I have to admit, that, that was actually one of the things on my, uh, I want to remind you about, um, list, that would be the AGI twenty-three conference. Um, if you, uh, if you Google AGI twenty-three, it will be the top result. Um, stream attendance is free, so hop on the, on the live stream. There's, I think, a, a couple of simultaneous, uh, streams. That'll be good, good fun. Uh, for now, yeah, I think, uh, it was a nice start of, uh, opening this discussion and hope to see you all, um, next week or on the Process Builder, one of the many other meetings. Thanks a lot.
Thank you all, and I'll see you tomorrow at Strategy for the continuation of this budget discussion.
All right. Thanks, everyone. All right. Thanks, everyone.